We're gonna go ahead and get started. Sorry we're a little late. We were in another meeting and tried to exit as quickly as we could. But we normally start our meeting with prayer. If you're able, I'd ask you to stand at this time and ask council members to be back with this prayer. Thank you. Father, we thank you for your blessing over our city and over our region. We thank you for leading the God in our discussions and our thoughts. We thank you for our spirits and safety. We thank you, Father, for the lives that have been saved, Father, during all the storms. And we ask that you help us to prepare adequately for what we can prepare for. And we thank you for the spirit of progress for everyone in our city who lives here. That's a simple call.
Good evening, Father.
Here.
Blackberry.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Bullard.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
If you came in, there was an agenda over here. Hopefully you picked one up. If you didn't, then hopefully you could share one if you didn't have enough. We're on item number four petitions to be received from the public. I'm gonna read the statement. And over the years, we've been pretty lenient on what we allow people to say when they came up to the podium. Good or bad, we've done that. Again, we had some instances where people directed their comments at individual members of the council or to individuals in this room or other people. And again, that's not what the intention of these petitions from the public is for. It's for you to address an issue with council and bring it before them for their consideration. So, I can read this again, but again, if somebody starts to come in at half-past nine, I am gonna stop you. And I hope that this is part of the council. I'm gonna ask you to sit down and then be removed if you're not willing to do that. So, this is petitions from the public portion of our city council meeting. If you'd like to address the council, you did need to sign up. I've got those up here. If you didn't get a card to sign up, somebody will bring you one. Any comments should be directed to the council as well and not to individual council members or city staff. This is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, the council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask that you come up to the podium, speak in a civil manner. And any personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated. And we'll ask you to sit down. Again, we're gonna give you three minutes. And we'll give your brief up in about two and a half minutes. So, at this time, I'd like to call up Lamont Parker at fifteen forty-one Beverly Road.
Good evening, city councilors. I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. And also the constituents out here. I brought a sentence. I'm trying to bring a solution to a problem. As we all know, you know, we do have a gang problem in this city. And, you know, I am a, I'm gonna be honest with you for everybody in here. I'm a convicted felon and I have been incarcerated around a lot of these gang members, a lot of guys that have been affiliated with gangs. And I see that as far as the situation in our city, a lot of, I think what we're not doing is, we're not exercising enough prevention. And why I say that is because if you know the basis of how gangs are ran, then you would see that the way to minimize a game is to deal with the leadership. And a lot of, and a lot of these situations, we don't, they don't have structure because we're actually locking up all of the leaders of these groups and thinking that we're solving the problem, but actually you're not. You're actually circumventing a problem that makes it worse. What we need to do, I'm not saying that these guys shouldn't be locked up or they shouldn't be incarcerated for their actions. But what I'm saying is we gotta try a different approach to a problem. We don't always have to approach it in locking these guys up and just saying that throw away the key. Because a lot of times, these leaders of these gangs and these groups, when they leave, they leave a circumvent a problem of kids and people that are under them that are also, they don't have any leadership. What I'm saying is if we implement a program, like me and Sammy Battle is here tonight, if we implement a program to try to bring these gang members in front of your council to discuss this situation and see if we can put something together in order for these individuals to try to find a solution to this problem. Because if we bring all the gang leaders together, I believe we can try to, you know, bring down this crime rate in this city and see if we can, you know, bring about a peace treaty of some sort, you know? I just wanna bring that to y'all's attention because I'm able to do that because of the fact that I've been in this city, you know what I'm saying, as far as being in these neighborhoods and being in these places in order to be able to talk to these guys. Because of course, they're not gonna talk to police and we know that. And you know they're not gonna come here, not unless they're invited. You know what I'm saying? Under certain circumstances. I know y'all have rules and regulations here and they're gonna abide by it.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I just wanted y'all to, you know, consider, take that into consideration with me and Sammy Battle bringing that to y'all's attention if y'all would just consider it. You know, I wanted to bring a lot of these gang leaders here in order to conversate with y'all about making, doing this kind of program, bringing them together and holding them accountable for their actions and the people that are up under them. And I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Warren Aldrich, one seventeen, Manchester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, and Councilmembers. My name's Warren Aldrich. This is my friend Sammy Battle. We're both residents of Rocky Mountain. Sam and I are different ends in pretty obvious ways. We're also a lot alike in some not-so-obvious ways. Among other things, we're passionate about the kids here in Rocky Mountain. We're also passionate about creating an environment in which they can grow and prosper. We're also passionate about trying to understand each other and to build bridges between our communities. As you've heard me say, Sam's speech during our first council meeting inspired me to develop an idea on how to get groups of dissimilar people into meeting for battle.
I am Sam Battle. And this is my friend Warren. First, let me apologize for last, for the last meeting, my temple, the city council meeting. I got so frustrated with Sam and our kids messing up so badly. It doesn't seem like anyone cared. Warren and others that are getting together on the Love Rocky Mountain group are making a difference. In my community, they are doing things for us with no expectations that have done more in the last few weeks than anyone here has done in a year.
I wanna be clear, we're really not anti anything. We're about breaking down barriers. We're pro dialogue. We're pro committing to trying to understand each other. We're pro loving our neighbors as we do ourselves. We're pro living the golden rule, doing unto others as we would have them do unto us. We've invited several of you to engage with us. We just want to know, we want you to know, the world to know that we're here with open arms, with open ears, with open hearts and minds, and also with willing helping hands. Together, we will make a difference in this city. Come join us at Love Rocky Mountain. Thank you.
Gloria Davis, eighteen twelve, Lynn Avenue. And then after that's gonna be Ron Green, thirty-seven twelve, Woodmore.
Good evening to the council members. I'm Gloria Davis and I reside in Rocky Mountain's member of community. I have unsuccessfully been able to get this information printed into local email telegram. I apologize if I did not reach out to the appropriate persons to get it done. However, I want to share light on some positiveness and not the crimes and bitterness across the local Rocky Mountain areas. I want to give kudos and thanks to those that helped with the Meadowbrook Community Improvement Association's cleanup campaign on May the fourth, twenty nineteen. These are people who made a difference with their actions and not just conversations. So, if you're present, I'd like to give kudos to these people. Archer Jones with the City of Rocky Mountain Relations Department, Stephanie Collins with the Keep America Beautiful Department, the Rocky Mountain Police Chief George Robinson, and police officers Thompson, Rothrod, and Castillo. Edgecombe County Sheriff Kian Atkinson, family, going chapel church members, Tiara and Malaysia Epps. And some of the people came from other communities, like Dr. Kim Koo, Nathan O'Ree, Stephen Johnson, Vanessa Whitaker, and grandkids, Sophia Smith, Reed Rasswell, Dennis Powell, Curtis Bay, the tall gamma Delta Sorority members, Anita Jones was the president, Stephanie Johnson, Gwynn LaMarche, Faith Nathan Parker, and Latasha Lindsay, Robert Davis, Davis, the current president, and yours truly Gloria Davis, the secretary and coordinator of the cleanup campaign. And for continued cleanup, we have reached out to Mr. Elton Daines with the Parks and Rec. And he has been very proactive. And with Mr. Kenna Cook, the code enforcement person, and he's been very cooperative. And I'd like to let you all know that I support the proposed hotel retail and housing development. Thank you.
Thank you. After Lauren Green, it's Robert Davis, eighteen twelve, Lynn Avenue.
Good evening. First, I just wanna say, I wanna thank the council, Rochelle Small Tony, for allowing us to take this initiative into Willoughby School. So, I'm just gonna give you updates since school has ended, give you update. But before I go into that, I wasn't gonna say anything outside of Willoughby for school. But I am gonna say I heard some things talking about young people. And we'll sit at the table. So, that table, we serve fourteen hundred young people. Let's sit at the table and come up with some solutions. And I'm just gonna talk to you a little bit about what we're doing at Willoughby for school. You know, we had an idea of working with Willoughby for school and came through two now. And Councilman Blackwell, myself, and superintendent sat down at the table and they was talking about what can we do. And I had an opportunity to sit down with Rochelle Small Tony in her office along with Parks and Rec directors. And we talked about what can we implement in that school to help those young people. And, you know, we eventually, with the blessing of the superintendent, they lined up forty of the most, I'd say, most fragile young people out of the South Rocky Mountain community that attended our council. And as a result, at the end, from when we started the program to the end, they used reading three D, which is their reading level testing. And out of those forty young people, had only one kid that missed a day out of school from that time we started to the end, a scooter and chronic gauze and tears. And also, their reading scores increased by eighty-six percent. And we even had one kid that was in there, that went up six levels. So, if you provide young people with the necessary resources and you give them those encouraging words of saying you can, they can. And I wanna say, you know, just repeat something that Frederick Douglass said. He said, "It's easier to build strong kids than to repair broken men." And our young people need our help. They are correct. They need our help.
You got that for a second.
I got you. And there was, and there's several young people in our community. Some that have two-parent homes. There's some that come from some impoverished neighborhoods. But they all need our help. We just gotta make sure we put the right resources in place to make sure our young people have every opportunity to grow into what they can and should become. So, I just wanna say personally, thank the council for allowing us that opportunity to go on Willoughby for school. Rochelle Small Tony, she's having the word with all to say, "Let's make it happen." And we made it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Davis, and then eighteen twelve, Lynn, and then Sammy Battle, two sixteen Oak.
Good afternoon. I'd like to say thank you to my city government. And I think I'm known as a person who will come before the city council if I have a reason or that something bothers me that I think is not going right and saying. And at the same time, I would like to be known as a person that will come before the city council and say, "I think you're doing a good job when you're doing one." And I'd like to take this time and say, kudos. I think for the first time since I've been in Rocky Mountain that I see progress for this city like I've never seen before. The progress such as the hotel, retail, and all the stuff that's going on that was laid out with the Tennessee investors. That program seems like it's going very positive. For once, we seem to be one city. And I think that's all coming from the fifteen years of hard work of this city council. And I wanna say thank you. You guys are doing a good job. I know it's not easy. I know that sometimes you get frustrated. But please continue your work. The city and overall support you. And those that want to tell the city apart, please overlook it. Continue building us as one city. The railroad track is invisible because as long as we allow that railroad track to divide us, we're a city that will never go anywhere. I'll never forget, my wife and I was in Winston-Salem once at the National Day Theater Festival. And Esther Rowe stopped us to have breakfast with her. And she asked us where we were from. And we told her Rocky Mountain. And the first thing she said, "I remember that city. It's the one that got the railroad track running down the middle."
You got about thirty seconds, Mr. ...
That railroad track has done more than just identified this city. People don't know the division that railroad track has created. And for, it looks like right now, if we can continue with this effort, the railroad track is gonna go invisible. Please continue your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, Agent Nat Cobb, from eighteen twenty-eight Augustus.
Good evening, city council members. I have a couple of issues. This weekend, a couple of my friends came from DC. Went to Bogota T and the gym was closed. And when Sarkin Mountain was open, and we trying, I'm trying to figure something out that they're not familiar with. Why one side of town, something's open, other side of town, something's closed. Over here at the gym, open, Sarkin Mountain, open at ten o'clock. Over here, open at two, maybe one o'clock. We got, they vote, it's ran by the city. And we need to upgrade stuff over here on Edgecombe County side. We wanna water park on our side of town. We want new play, play stuff over there outside of town for our kids too. Sarkin Mountain got, you know, they getting everything over there. We got kids over there at OIC, Holiday Street area. We ain't getting nothing over there. They got water park over there. We don't have nothing over there. We got, we got a baseball field over here. The kids ain't got nowhere to play over here. We need the same stuff that they got on Sarkin Mountain side. We don't have nowhere on Edgecombe County side. And the gym, it need to be upgraded. We need AC units in it. We still got the fan system in there. You know, when it's ninety-five degrees outside, it's probably a hundred and thirty degrees in the gym. They gotta shut the gym down. We don't have the same thing that Sarkin Mountain, Green Center have that we don't have over here, that we have Bogota T. I love Bogota T. I think it's one of the best gyms in Rocky Mountain. And we doing this, all this upgrading stuff over here. On the other side, we need to do it on Edgecombe County side. You know, it's just facts. You know, our kids can't even go in here. And some of the kids don't even wanna go down Sarkin Mountain because they gaining, they gotta be over there. So, we, you know, we gonna stay divided because kids is not going over there because they scared they might get shot. So, we gotta make it comfortable for them over here on Edgecombe County side. The gym is hot now, it really is. We need AC unit. It's been over twenty, thirty, thirty years that people been complaining about that they don't have AC unit in it. It's still around the same.
Twenty seconds, Mr. ...
You know, I'm just, I'm just speaking the truth with facts. I just want the best for the kids on the other side of the town. If those kids get this on here, make sure the kids on this side of town do the same thing. Don't take all the resources and put it on that's counter side. And these kids on Edgecombe County side got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Janette Cobb, and Natasha Aldrich, three sixteen, Ainsley.
Greetings to the members of our hard-working, dedicated city council and to all who are here. There's a reason for my attire. This is my second time speaking. I'm not great. I'm just used to kids. I can do them. But greetings to the members of our hard-working, dedicated city council. My name is Janette Thomas Cobb, a resident of eighteen twenty-eight Augustus Drive, Rocky Mountain. I'm honored to be in the audience and before the city council. You, the members of this hallowed chamber, represent a grand experiment, a work in progress. Let me repeat, you're a work in progress, just like I am. And I call it D-E-M-O-C-R-A-C-Y, democracy. Or as someone who corrected me, who was not of my political affiliation when I was working one time, said, "It's a republic, lady." That's true story. As advised, I'm aware of breaking a rule of the ceaseless writer. Avoid lists at all costs. Yet these precious thoughts and feelings brewing in my mind, heart and soul, yearning expression, all sources emanate from little old me. Seventy-one, soon to be seventy-two-year-old retired teacher. Profile of American voter. One, female designated by my creator. Number two, a daughter. Number three, formerly single. Four, white, college grad. Mom, number six. Number seven, proud grandmother of not one, not two, but three granddaughters. The aunt with only one nephew. On down to, I'm a cousin and I'm a niece. I have a host of friends from different places and different spaces and different times. I'm a caretaker. I was a caretaker of my two grandparents who raised me and took care of me with a mentally ill mother. A mother who my dad was not able to take care of. My grandmother picked us up and brought me down. She gave me piano lessons. I was a member of scouts. I had swimming lessons. You name it, they gave it.
You got about thirty seconds.
What?
You got about thirty seconds.
Oh, gosh, you just got started. I got a lot to say. I am a patriot, a rarely designated characterization symbolic of loyalty to family, friends, and coworkers and everyone. While seldom given credit as a living testimony to our county's, our country's success, I'm referring to my sisters, the women of America. We have the power of the ballot. We will join hands to use it. Make no mistake, folks, we women are ready.
Then, Natasha Aldrich, three sixteen, Ainsley, and then Dr. Kim Koo, two twenty, South Endwood. This is last one of these I'm gonna take because we did have a council meeting, other agenda items, so we'll take that one and then we'll move on. Yes, ma'am.
I had something prepared, but listening to some other ones, I'm gonna change it up a little bit. For three years, or whatever, I've been coming up here. Various times, different people in different positions, speaking on the animals. And for three years, it has been a lot of turmoil. Most recently, this past week, to incumbent the past three years, let me back up a second. Got in a lot of ridicule, a lot of name-calling, a lot of flack. Learned a lot in the process. But this past week was very detrimental. The volunteer that's with the animal shelter that we speak of multiple times decided to include me in false allegations that we had to speak to the attorney on. To make matters worse, a couple months ago, Ms. Watkins lodged false allegations against me with a personal matter.
Again, I'm asking you not to address my council member personally.
Okay, but excuse me. My councilperson from Wardford that I live in made false allegations to a place I volunteer at, which was detrimental. And they were proven to be false. Proven to be false. For three years, we haven't gotten much of anywhere. For ten months, I've been emailing on our animal advisory board. And for ten months, no responses. Ten months. Instead of turning this whole thing negative, I want to take a little bit of positivity of what animals can bring, what the people that I work with, the organizations, to the boards I serve on, and what we do. I don't like voting because it seems to be very conceited. But I want you to know what this city is missing out on. During the floods, we ended up with over forty-three thousand pounds of dog food donated. I had friends and volunteers lined up, forty-three thousand pounds. It was turned down by Rocky Mountain. We provided food to Virginia, South Carolina, and numerous places across North Carolina. I've had to turn down camera equipment for grants that we could have received to go to our animal shelter to help promote animals. We've been recently talking to some people of the public, various members, various organizations, of bringing therapy teams in to work with kids, which again, produces additional grants that you can apply for. The amount of resources that we have available, the people that we have behind us, the volunteers, the support and everything in between, I'm just scratching the tip of the iceberg of what we can do. And nobody wants to listen. Nobody. You just look at it as like, animals don't matter. But I'm asking you all to listen.
Thank you. And again, just to follow up, we have seated a number of members of the Animal Control Board and I'm trying to set up the first meeting in the next two weeks. I think we've got a couple of council members that are still finalizing things, but we are gonna set a meeting up, trying to do that in the next two weeks that we can move forward. If a couple of positions are not filled, it's not gonna stop us from going ahead and starting the meetings and starting the dialogue. So, we have heard you. It's taken a while to get to this point, I agree. But we are moving forward with it at this time. So, just so you'll know, and I know Stacy, you're coming up and that's part of what your issues are. So, hopefully, still would like you to make your comments, but I understand where we're going. Dr. Koo, and then Demi Smith, sixteen twenty, East Pretoria.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Koo and I live in two-two-zero South Angledwood Drive, Rocky Mountain. As a citizen of Rocky Mountain, I'm thrilled to hear about the upcoming construction around Event Center and its surroundings. The proposed actions include workforce housing of sixty units on Tabaro Street that can meet some of the housing crunch we're having, and a possible construction of a tier-one hotel with accompanying shops. I fully support such moves that will bring much-needed progress, investments, jobs, and affordable housing to the communities around the Event Center. I also noticed that at each step of the way, negative criticism have been thrown at such projects with unacceptable alternative suggestions. I had hoped that by this century, there will be greater understanding and enlightenment for all of us to favor more equitable treatment of all issues affecting us, like housing, employment, healthcare, and the environment. The cost of doing business that favors such equitable moves have always been used to slam them down. For example, Medicaid expansion. That is unfortunate as such reasoning serves only to widen the vast inequalities already in place in place. I hope that the city council will continue to do what it can to narrow this inequality gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Demi, and then Michael Delug, seven seventeen, Param Street.
A beach trip, brown bag lunches, gently-used furniture, and new toys. Somebody tell me how those things were ever a remedy for poverty. Now, they might be a remedy for campaign exposure, but they never smash the surface when talking about a remedy for poverty. Fifteen impoverished neighborhoods in our city, and the solution is the aforementioned list? Certainly not. They are those who are lifting up new heroes for the black community, agenda-backed heroes in an effort to dismiss the good work that is already being done. And so, they come to my community with handouts and in the same breath will disparage workforce housing and those organizations who are helping people help themselves. And correct me if I'm wrong, Brother Rose, that that's double-mindedness. And the word says that a double-minded man is unstable, not in some of his ways, not in most of his ways, not in a few of his ways, but in all his ways. There are organizations embedded in our communities that offer trade training and certification, provide access to affordable health. certification, provide access to affordable healthcare, and allow troubled youth to finish their high school education. In other words, allowing people to think for themselves instead of thinking for them. There's not a deficit of toys, or gently-used furniture, or beach trips in our communities. There are, however, deficits of opportunity and well-funded quality education, summer literacy programs, and mentoring. Those are things that you will find at the very core of killing poverty in any community. The French philosopher Rene Descartes says, "Je pense, donc je suis." The Latin is, "Pugito ego sum." Further translated, "I think, therefore I am." And that's the problem with the poverty pimps, singular thinking presented as collective concern. However, this is an issue of sustainable value versus temporary comfort. But the word speaks to that too. Proverbs three, five, and six says, "May not to thy own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy path." Brother Rose, I think it also says, Proverbs fourteen, twelve, "For there is a way that seemeth right unto a man." Again, are the ways of death or destruction. Continue to do the good work that you're doing to help people help themselves. And as someone, I know they wonder why I say not, go somewhere and sit down. Thank you.
Michael Deluge, Param Street, and then Sue Perrin Cole, two fifty-one West.
Good afternoon to the council. I'm Michael Modiloche, uh, here from Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I grew up in South Rocky Mountain, and I'm currently playing professional basketball overseas. And I'm here today to just let you guys know, whatever I can do to help bring this community together, I'm willing to do. I've been throwing a basketball camp ever since I became a pro. And I got one coming up this Saturday at South Rocky Mountain Gym. I've partnered with the city, Chris Allen down in South Rocky Mountain. And I have also Todd Gurley coming to town from the Rams. I also have Taquon Lewis coming to town, uh, from the Colts. And, uh, we're just trying to come together and make this city work. And, you know, I focus a lot on South Rocky Mountain, because that's where I'm from. And I try to do a lot of things down there to help, and, um, hopefully I'll be partnering with the city to do a lot more things to help the South Rocky Mountain community, because that's where I'm from. And, uh, again, I'd just like to say, thank you, God, that's, you know what I'm saying? And I'm here, reachable, and whatever I can do to help this city become one again. And I get a lot of support from the community, especially the young generation. We're actually coming together, I've been speaking with some of the young people, and we actually come together to try to get more involved, to do what we're supposed to do in this city to, uh, to make things happen. So, again, I'm here, and whatever I can do to help, you know, sure that you guys can reach me, I'm, uh, you know, I'm willing to help. And also, I'm part owner of Owen D., I would like to see a little bit more light down there. You know, it's very dark down there. I would like to see just some light down there, because that's something, you know, me and my family decided to do, to come bring our business downtown to help out the city. So, we'd like to see a little bit more, um, light down there. Thank you.
After Ms. Cole, it's Troy Davis, fifteen twenty-five.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I want to speak today as a longtime resident of an under-resourced neighborhood adjacent to downtown. Twenty-fourteen, the city conducted, or caused to be conducted, a housing study that ranked neighborhoods according to investment quality. That study found that there were fourteen under-resourced neighborhoods, many clustered on the Edgecombe side of Rocky Mountain and adjacent to downtown, such as the community where I live. The disinvestment in these neighborhoods has occurred over decades. And so, currently in the city, we have neighborhoods that do not have balanced investment or balanced quality of life across the entire city. That's why residents such as myself were so excited about the city council's leadership of downtown development. We were excited, because we saw an opportunity for our neighborhoods to reverse the tide of disinvestment. Now, we know that a strong central city is critical to the continued vitality of both Nash and Edgecombe Counties. We also know that surrounding communities such as Raleigh, Durham, Faraway, Asheville, and Charlotte, they all have thriving downtown centers. As we understand the Event Center, it was intended to create jobs, enhance the tax base, and increase investment in downtown, and here's the critical point, in surrounding downtown neighborhoods. And we hope that that would include affordable workforce housing in our communities. For these reasons, we support continuing to build the momentum of investment in downtown, and that would include the investment as proposed by a private developer of a hotel complex. This developer's from Tennessee. We residents in these under-resourced communities have a vision of one Rocky Mountain, a united Rocky Mountain where there's a balanced quality of life across our neighborhoods. So, we strongly encourage you to stay the course, continue the downtown investment strategy, so you can achieve an inclusive, equitable, and shared prosperity that will benefit all of the city's residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Troy Davis, seventeen twenty-one Country Club.
I'm Troy Davis. I'm here to talk about security. My concern is public safety and neighborhood security. My recent incident at the city hall is well documented, as you guys all know. Where my frustration with this issue got the best of me, and I apologize for the explicit language used. However, I do not apologize for the outrage. I am outraged. As a community citizen, resident of Meadow Brook, and someone who is fully invested in the success of our community, my outrage is justified. How did I get to that place of outrage? I had just witnessed two young women fighting each other in the middle of a sting-hot asphalt street, punching and scratching to kill. It breaks my heart. And my spirit to witness this in my neighborhood, not where I only live, my grandmom lives, my mom lives, and where I am heavily invested, I own over fourteen houses in this community. That is why I tried desperately to avoid it from happening. I called the police as soon as I saw the two crowds getting out of the car and walking towards one another. I am insulted that the police were reporting eight-minute response time. It took at least five minutes for the youth to get out of their cars and gather, and began walking towards one another. They argued, and then the fight started. Still no police. It was a twenty-minute response at the very least. A lone police officer then arrived after the fight. I asked her, "Where is your backup?" She threw up her shoulders, "Your guess is as good as mine's." And yes, there was a fight, and yes, there was an injury. I have the footage. They showed up in time to find me outraged at what I had just witnessed. An outrage that they did not arrive in time to avoid it from happening. Then I went to city hall to voice my frustration, to be surprised and confronted with new security that seemed to be put in place overnight. I just wish that security was put in overnight in our underserved communities. They could respond to avoid the potential murder in my neighborhood, but they could put tight security in place overnight. That all added to my frustration and outrage. But this is not about me. This is about the security in our neighborhoods. This is about encouraging other citizens, concerned citizens like me, to report incidents in our neighborhoods, and expecting expeditious response from our police. This is the urgency, not further protecting city hall already attached to the police department. I am still frustrated and outraged, and believe there are thousands of others just as frustrated as I am.
After Ms. Graham, Nathan Ori, I believe, seventeen thirteen Delaware.
Mayor, city council. As you're aware, I'm mostly up here talking about the Animal Control Care Advisory Board. I was gonna gently remind you that the board itself was adopted by this council on April ninth of two thousand eighteen. And you just let me know that you have sat enough people to actually build a board, or enough people for us to have a board. I appreciate that. But I also want to let you know that after being here for over two and a half years, there has still never been a posting on the city website for any opening in a board or commission. It's hard to find interested, qualified people for any position when you don't communicate the need. So, please, get better at communicating that need. I also have been listening to people talk up here, and you know that I've spoken with regard to children's rights and children welfare. Letting children know that they matter is key to child development, and it reduces risk factors attributed to criminality, drug abuse, and human trafficking. Big results start with small actions, no matter the race or the location. As always, I'd be happy to provide you with the research that supports this statement.
Thank you. I would like to just say that we've had several articles in the paper telling about the statement, okay, about our board, and board appointments, and which ones were open. So, again, whether we're putting it online, I don't know. We could probably do that, but we've put it in the paper a number of times. So, just, I did put it online as well. Nathan? Nathan?
Oh.
Yes, ma'am. And then after that, Alicia Rowan.
Good evening, city council. I come to you with mixed emotions, because I am so happy to be alive. I'm so happy to represent the N W A C P. I've been asked over time to please let people know that it is not a black organization, that it was founded in nineteen oh nine, and that, um, it was formed in nineteen oh nine after the Chicago riot of nineteen oh eight. And the organization was formed by four whites and two African Americans. And the mission is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights and law persons, and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination over the years. And to this point, we are still working, and I am here, you know, lifting up those hopes and those dreams. On the other hand, I am so thankful to Mayor Combs and the city council for the proclamation that was presented yesterday at the Jack Lowery Veterans Park downtown. My mother-in-law's ninety-five years old, she's on the front page of the paper. They honored her son, I mean, her brother, who was, who went to the Korean War in nineteen fifty-five, was killed. And President Trump was able to negotiate and have fifty-five bodies returned to the United States last summer. And Private First Class William Hoover Jones was one of the three who were positively identified through DNA as, you know, when the remains returned. And we were honored in the park, and thank you, Brother Bull, for that beautiful prayer that you rendered yesterday, and thank you, council people, for your representation. Thank you for the proclamation that touched my family's heart. I have family from out of state, and they were very uplifted by that experience, and I mean, they just had so many good things to say about Rocky Mountain, and look across and see the convention center, and everything was just beautiful. The sun was beautiful yesterday, and, you know, some good things are happening in Rocky Mountain. Unfortunately, we're not in every place to see everything. Thank you, Rocky Mountain, for the swimming park that does exist on the Edgecombe side, county side. It was built after my daughter grew up, she grew up going to the one by the OIC, but it is now a nice swimming facility over there by the Oakwood Shopping Center. And some good things are happening in Rocky Mountain, and we just need to do a better job of identifying the good things and partnering and embracing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the same issue, but Alicia Rowan, three twelve Branson, and then Caitlin Harris, one thirteen Branson Woods.
Good evening to the council members. My name's Alicia Rowan. The city of Rocky Mountain has a problem. There are members of our community engaging in illegal street racing. People are talking about the problem, but nothing is being done. In two thousand and seven, at least fifty people were arrested in Nash and Edgecombe County for drag racing. Not only the community, but also the local police know that there are many roads in Rocky Mountain known for this dangerous activity, such as Arlington Extension, South Church Street, Kingston Ave., Gold Rock Road, and sadly, many more. Not only in our city, but the highways coming into our city also. It's happening on roads where children are playing and people are at risk. The irresponsible juveniles and adults are not only putting their own and many other people's lives in danger, but oftentimes they have defenseless passengers in the vehicles with them. A direct quote from the CDC says, "In the United States, seven hundred twenty-three children ages twelve years and younger died as occupants of motor vehicle crashes during twenty sixteen. In an average of five years, the death toll from crashes has stayed the same in Nash and Edgecombe Counties. We need police presence to stop these criminal activities from happening. As recently as yesterday, May twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, there was a drag race on Arlington Extension that ran a motorcyclist off the road, driving side by side. The driver of the motorcycle sustained multiple injuries, but was able to walk away and get help. The police were called, and nothing was done. They didn't ask to see where the crash occurred. On April twentieth, twenty nineteen, two young men were killed on three oh one in a street race. Around seven-thirty on January twenty-first, twenty eighteen, two people were arrested for drag racing in Rocky Mountain. On September third, twenty eighteen, Labor Day, Darrell Coley, age ten, was killed on Arlington Extension during a pre-arranged street competition between five adults that started racing on Kingston Ave. and ended up on Arlington Extension. They met up at the Old Texaco on Raleigh Road before engaging in this act. The race ended on Arlington Extension after everyone had realized there was a crash. The police have a video from a month and a half prior to the crash, where two of the cars involved were racing each other already. One of the vehicles had to move out of the way, because there was oncoming traffic. All incidents were in the daytime, and all of these streets mentioned have children at play, and nothing has been done to address this issue. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, and then Maria, Caitlin Harris, and then Maria Avalon. Pull the mic down, so we can hear.
Hello. Thank you very much. You speak to now, and you're Caitlin Harris. Oh, now, right off Arlington Extension. In Rocky Mountain, you can go to any fire station with a ticket or a citation, and they will show you how to buckle your truck, and sign a paper that you take to court and have the ticket thrown out. As of now, you can take this class multiple times, and every single time have that ticket thrown out. When you don't have consequences for your actions, you don't learn your lesson. One CDC study found that in one year, more than six hundred and eighteen thousand children ages zero to twelve rode in vehicles without the use of child safety seat or booster seat or a seatbelt at least some of the time. Of the children ages twelve years and younger who died in a crash in two thousand and sixteen, for which restraint use was unknown, thirty-five were not buckled up. Stricter enforcement of these laws is proven effective technique to reduce fatalities and injuries in cars. Seatbelt usage has increased greatly since nineteen ninety-four, and as a result, fatalities and accidents have gone down. However, until seatbelt usage is a hundred percent, we cannot stop these people from dying. We need more stricter enforcement in order to get more people to wear a seatbelt and properly use child safety seats. We feel like we should have to pay a fine if a child isn't buckled properly, or you don't have a child safety seat. You shouldn't be able to go to the fire station and have your ticket thrown out, because you are given a class on something that you should already know. These are our children, and we're not giving chances of thought. We'll go to jail, we'll get tickets, we'll get fines, but we're just letting it happen to our children, should our children's lives be worth any less. Thank you.
Maria?
Hello, I appreciate you letting us see. My name's Maria Avalon. My son was Darrell Coley. He was the one killed on September third in a street race in Arlington Extension. The people of Rocky Mountain are expressing their concerns as to why, like, the street racing is not being addressed in our town. We would like to see cameras put up on the streets known for street racing, and more police presence among many other suggestions from people in our local town to stop these dangerous acts from happening. We're asking you to take measures to prevent this from happening, since there are currently none in place. Some of the suggestions that we have received from the community consist of lowering the speed limit on our street, on Arlington Extension, and other streets that they're racing on and know for racing, adding speed bumps or rumble strips. We would like to see a street racing task force. Street racing in Rocky Mountain's happening every single day. And I know this personally, every day, the trailer park cross street from where I live, they're saying it's happening every day. The community is saying it's happening every day online, and nothing's being done. Street racing in Rocky Mountain is a problem. There's a memorial for my son on Arlington Extension, who was killed less than nine months ago in a street race. This isn't enough of a turn to make people stop his memorial, is it? They're racing right past the accident, the crash that happened last night happened right by his side. We would also like to see signs warning people not to street race on the roads in our town known for street racing. Darrell's life should have been enough to make a change, so please help us change it now. And I want to make a note that, um... And I want to make a note that it took over twenty minutes. My friend was on the phone with the police for over twenty minutes before they got, it was about twenty-three minutes before they arrived. Right outside of Rocky Mountain on Arlington Extension, we're on the city limits. There's no reason for that, and they did not seem concerned. They were there for less than three minutes and left. And I had to confront them on, what are you going to do? My baby was killed. There's other people, there's two other kids that were killed on three oh one in Rocky Mountain on April twentieth. It's happening all over. The police, I've talked to many police, I work at Dunkin' Donuts, they come to my job all the time, and all of them say it's a problem, but what's being done? So please help us and address the issue. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask the city manager if he can get some type of update or report from the chief on this street racing and know a little bit more about what's happening and how he might address it. My last comment, there's Camilla's Dancing, one twenty-seven, Midway.
Good evening. My name is Camilla's Dancing. That's when I was going to say the thing, and I had prepared a speech about this for home. Got the printer. I am Camilla's Dancing. I joined Black Works for Justice back in the late eighties, the NWA CP in nineteen ninety-two. There's no kind of Democratic Party in the late eighties. I served on the Criminalation Commission, but I accepted meetings back in the late eighties before, when Mr. Loretta Wiggins was the chair of the, well, the director. I think, if I'm not correct, that I have been a tenured speaker longer than anybody on this board. Now, people may have been here, but I think I was a tenured before he did. So I'm not following the board. I'm just making sure that things stay in place, whoever the express is, just like I do with any other political seat. I also was vice chair of the Rocky Mountain, Edgecombe Mash Need Incorporated back in the early nineties. I served through the NWA CP and also through the Edgecombe County Commissioners. The council have worked together, and their actions and their votes are documented on video and in the minutes of the meetings. So if anybody got any problem with what they have done, read the minutes. I want to thank the council, the city manager, staff, police chief, officers, fire, and others for the job, the way, the job well done I've seen you do over the years. And for Ms. Tony, you have proved yourself to be professional in spite of the negativity, especially during the time of the passing of both parents, when people had no sympathy. I want to appreciate you for standing strong as a woman. Also, I was at the memorial yesterday. Ms. Elizabeth Orie is one of my, is my main, number one supporter, because she met me through the Edgecombe County Democratic Party. And I, she was much older, she was about five hundred fifty-six, but she, you know, took me in, and I educated her on what the party, about the party and everything, so she basically looked at me like a son. But her daughter always said, I had so much in my head that my head was going to split. But I was there yesterday. Where were you? I have covered more stuff in Rocky Mountain than most people, okay, than most people that live here. I am invested here. I have worked here thirty-two years. I have, I will tell you all the different organizations I was in. I got major family here. You don't know who they are, you don't need to know who they are. But I got major friends and associates. And Ms. Orie, I talked to you, Ms. Orie, this morning, so I got the video. I did this out of pocket. So if anybody got a problem with what I'm doing, come see me, because I'm promoting Rocky Mountain as a hilldollar caliber when you were doing good and when you were doing bad. So I appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you. That is the end of our petitions from the public. We're going to move on now to item number five. This is the consideration of property exchanges. This is for block and homes. This is for property located on the east side of Little Street and four-ten Northland property located at twenty-three oh five Earth Westland. This is in connection with the Monk-Demille Trail Project. It's pursuant to a resolution of intent to exchange the real property adopted by the council on April twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. It authorized the city clerk to issue a public notice of intent in the telegram setting the value of the properties and announcing the city's intent to authorize the exchange at its May thirteenth meeting. We did defer it from May thirteenth, so it's on our agenda tonight, and the recommended action is to defer the action again for some order of motion until June tenth. Now, your motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jordan, second by Councilmember Rogers and Watkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. We will defer it until our June tenth meeting. Item six is a consideration of the following requests for fireworks display. There's one there for a request from Edenwood Baptist Church. This is on July the fourth from nine fifteen. The alternate date is July the fifth. And this is a second request to conduct a firework display at five fifty Independence Drive. It's our sports complex. That would be at nine o'clock, and the alternate date would be July the tenth. Recommended action is to approve the request.
With the approval.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Jordan. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item six is approved. Item seven is a consideration of a submission of amended grant request. This is to the Golden Leaf Foundation. This is to increase the funding for the Parkus Canal Stream Stabilization Project. It does increase our grant request by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six. Recommended action is authorize the staff to submit the amended request, and two, authorize the mayor, city manager, and the appropriate staff member to execute required documentation and certifications, including any subsequent grant agreements.
Second.
What was that?
Councilmember Knight.
Second by Councilmember Blackwell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item seven is approved. There is a long list of font leases that are in your agenda, and you got amended bands. I am not going to go over every single lease, A through H, unless you've got a question about any particular one. I would be glad to discuss that, but the recommended action, since you had time to look at it, is to adopt the resolution authorizing the lease agreements. It does authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Jordan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item eight is approved. Item nine is a consideration of the following change orders. This is relative to the Rocky Mountain Events Center. This is change order number five. This was from Barhill Holt Brothers. It's an extension of the actual contractual date of subsequent completion by twelve days. This was due to inclement weather. There is no additional cost. And the other one is a CMTS. It's an increase of twenty-five due to extended time to close out the project. Recommended action is to approve the change orders and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Someone have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
City manager, could you, CMTS? I'm going to change over to number two. Item nine, change item number two. Talks about CMTS. I'm not sure, I can answer.
I think CMTS was the company that worked on the roof issue that we had.
Bridge.
So I believe that.
Okay. Yeah, come on out. Mr. Penny can enlighten us.
Thank you, Charles. I'm sorry, I just didn't see him sitting in the back there doing sports.
We made a change order with CMTS, twenty-five, to extended time to close out the project. And I think the question was, who is CMTS?
CMTS is the owners rep. If you remember, the project was done as a design-build project. That means that you didn't hire an architect. The architect is hired by the contractor, which is Barhill and Holt Brothers joint venture. So we at the city, the city has to have someone that can represent us, look over the technical, look over the drawings and all that. So CMTS is the owners rep. So you pay them to represent us, the city, in all of those matters. They review all the payment requests, all those things. Anytime there's a dispute, if you remember when we had, they asked for a time extension, they asked for a lot more days. CMTS is the one that went through, and they asked for forty-seven days, and I think they recommended something like nineteen days extension. So that's who CMTS is. They're out of tech, but they do a good job for the city of Rocky Mountain. We thought the project would have been closed out in February, but the project is extended until hopefully we were closing out in June. And so what this change order does, it covers their costs, but it also gets, it covers the costs of them coming back in October for the close. We'll do a final walkthrough of the event center, and anything that needs to be done about two weeks before the warranty period runs out, this increased cost will also cover that business.
Any other questions? Charles, can you talk about why it's taken longer to close it up?
Well, I, I, we kept adding things, and as we tried to finish out the project, we added the cushions in the climbing area, so that added time. We're adding cushions around the bleachers, the telescopic bleachers, so when kids are playing volleyball, they don't run into those hard bleachers and hurt themselves. There was some, we've had some, we've had a few, we had an issue with the roof, but you're not paying for the repair and correction of that roof issue. But it's just a matter, we had to redo some of the parking in front of the building, the handicap ramps, and that came out of a complaint that was lodged with Department of Insurance. And so all of those things, it's just finishing up a project. You know, we're building and working time, but it's just a matter of just trying to get as much out of the project as we can. Fortunately, and I'm very proud to say, we've been able to do without that having to ask for any additional money.
Thank you, Mr. Penny.
We had a motion, I got some other questions. Yes, questions?
Excuse me, I'll call it for you. It is, isn't here no additional cost for your throwback?
The only additional cost is that change order for CMTS, but it's still within the budget that was approved. We just need your authority to.
Any other questions? We have a motion by Councilmember Miller, we never got a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rogers. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration of a grant application. This is to the North Carolina Science Museum Grant Program. This is for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And funding request is of seventy-five thousand. There's no match required. So again, the recommendation is to approve the grant application and authorize submission by staff, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute required documentations and certifications, including subsequent grant agreement.
No approval.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item ten's approved. Item eleven is a consideration of two thousand and nineteen certifications and assurances. This is required by the Federal Transit Administration and the North Carolina DOT and the Public Transportation Division for two thousand and nineteen transit grants. Recommended action is to approve certifications and assurances, authorize the mayor and the city clerk and city attorney to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Watkins, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration of a bid for purchase of gas pipes. This is to be utilized with the NC DOT project, which will require relocation of some existing natural gas facilities, and this is awarded to the Consolidated Pipe and Supply. Recommended action is to award bid as recommended, authorize the Purchasing Division to issue a purchase order in accordance with the council's award.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Jordan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I think we have one other item to add tonight, and so I want to say, manager, can I?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what you have before you tonight is related to the qualifications, request for qualifications for the downtown development project that many of you spoke about this afternoon. First of all, the council will need to adopt a resolution approving the project and authorizing a public-private partnership with Hunt Services Incorporated. And then secondly, to authorize the city clerk to provide a notice of thirty days for the summary of material terms of the proposed development agreement. So I'm recommending those two actions for the council to discuss.
Second.
I have a motion and second by Councilmember Blackwell and Knight and Watkins. Any discussion?
Yes, I believe that the hotel and the multi-use project only is very good, and I think it's important that we work out the details to protect the city. As a council member, I think each of us is responsible for the fiscal integrity of our city. I'm, too many times we've come to committee hall and then subsequently to council meeting to push forward something that we've not seen prior to either one of those meetings. I know this deals in the works, but act in time and give the information to us so we have time to review it.
And again, I just want to make, this is not approving this project, instead of approving a concept of development agreement with a developer. A lot of final terms and conditions would have to be met, not only locally, but at the state level. So again, this is not approval of the project itself, so I just want people to be aware of that. Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. There's nothing else. We thank you all for being here today, and we are adjourned.